This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so it's three o'clock. I will call the meeting to order if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Bob, can you mute yourself, please?
Okay, I want to welcome everyone to today's meeting. Just a couple housekeeping items. We've got three members here today. Is Flavi online as well?
She is not.
Okay, so we're going to try to condense the agenda a little bit. So we're gonna swap some things around in the order. So we're trying to get through it a little bit more expeditionally. So if we do have to table some conversations, or if we do push things along, it's not personal, we're just trying to manage time for today. So I appreciate everyone's patience as we go through this. I need to get a motion to allow Supervisor Guppert to attend virtually due to special circumstances.
Motion second.
Motion second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We will move to public comments.
I do not have any public comments from anyone here. No one online has asked to speak, and I'm not aware of any emails or faxes requesting to speak.
And Chelsea, we're gonna go through the agenda as it's stated in this document, so we'll go through.
Yes.
And then we'll hit action items. Okay. So again, as we go through staff reports, I would just encourage everyone, hit the highlights. And if there's more detail, or we can go into that, but if the board has questions, please feel free to jump in and ask. So Tony, we will start with you, sir.
No special report other than working with staff on a number of issues, and you'll see it today. One is the bond issue, other one is working with Chelsea and Laura with WCI on conveyance of a number of parcels. So they can, when our WCI can wrap up some items, and some other cleanup items that we're trying to bring back to the board. Chelsea's been leading the charge on that. And some other contractual matters, working on reviewing RFQs and contracts. So if there's specific questions, I'll answer those, but I've been working closely with Chelsea and Laura a lot in the last two weeks or so. It's all good.
Anything specific for Tony? No? Okay. District Engineer? Who was onsite today? And will be onsite once a month?
Where's his badge? Good knowing.
Good afternoon. Steven Agabi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. I have two items on the District Engineer. We've got a monthly update, and bond certification letters. On the status update, I'll just hit some of the highlights on the flowway wear modifications. We submitted for PON 38 for the South Florida permit yesterday. So looking forward to working with the district on getting that approved. HB 53 wastewater and stormwater needs analysis, that was submitted to staff, and we're already getting some feedback and wrapping that up. That's due at the end of this month. And then we have, it's on the agenda today, the bond validation assistance. I'll leave it at that if anyone has any questions for me.
Steven, just really quick, as far as when it comes to our wears and water levels, how would you rate our kind of current risk, or our current health of, I mean, we're at a higher watermark, right?
We're over control.
We're over control.
Right.
In the event of, you know, a storm coming through, what's our capability today to put us? You know, how much at risk are we with our current structure as it is today?
I mean, that's hard to say. I mean, it depends on the storm that we're, you know, you were facing. I think it's very unlikely that we'll have, you know, a hundred year storm this year. You know, statistically, it's supposed to be 1% chance every year. On the other side of that, in 2017, we had two of those back to back within like two weeks, so.
Give you an idea, water was within five feet of my house. Water was within five feet of my house a week and a half ago.
Yeah.
When we, we had the, we were at control, and then we got that, just about five or six inches.
Yeah.
It came up that fast. There was no place for the water.
And the reason I'm mentioning this is, again, we've done a lot of efforts, I think it's over the last two years.
Right.
To push forward in Jennifer adjustable wears, and put us in a position where we can control flow in a preventative manner. And it's taken a little bit longer for us to get there.
Right.
So I just want to continue to socialize what our risk is, just so we can convey that to.
The system has been designed to handle, you know, large storm events. The roads become conveyance for the stormwater. I think the biggest thing would be keeping your stormwater pipes clean, which I know Ellen and Saff have been working on, making sure they're regularly cleaned. So if you have one pipe that's clogged up, and, you know, it's backing up a whole basin, that's, that can really hurt you. Even if you have adjustable wears, so.
It wouldn't hurt us right now to go to South Florida and ask them if we couldn't open four and five up, and get back to control, instead of sitting there at six to eight inches over control. Because we have no storage.
And I would, I would position that too, as maybe an exercise.
Yes.
So we have an opportunity to exercise our mitigation process in the event of an emergency, because we haven't, you know, I think that might be a way that we can position it, so we're not releasing water, we're doing it to almost test and exercise
Right.
our standard operating procedures in the event of emergency management. So maybe that might get their attention, but they might allow us to do that more so if we're saying, hey, we want to dump some water.
I think there's good opportunity to reach out to the district. They actually called me about the time that Chelsea was joining, and wants to reconvene with quarterly meetings. So before COVID, we were meeting quarterly, and would talk about everything gave away, all the problems, all the current projects, compliance issues. So now Chelsea's plugged in pretty good. I think we'll get those reestablished.
We'll mention the wears at the meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Before you go too far, I suggest that you observe the flowway, especially down near tree line. It is very high. As a matter of fact, I don't recall ever seeing it higher than it is right now. If you put more water in there, I don't know what's gonna happen, but it doesn't sound like it's gonna be good.
Well, did we get that colonial restriction taken care of on the east side?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Holy crap. That's, if that's not fixed, we can't do anything.
Well, I, again, the way I would position it is.
Have you been down there, Chelsea?
I'll get out there tomorrow.
Go to the east side, right behind Colonial Country Club. That twin box culvert, there's two four by eights, and you have two eleven by sixes upstream feeding it. And what Bill's saying is exactly right, it's backwater curve. But what's worse is that there was all kinds of debris and vegetation down there that was, Chris, I thought was working on it, and had that cleared out.
And he may have, we just need to take a look.
So can, we'll talk about these wears in order to help move this along. And if the board would like to have perhaps a work session about this, that's something we can schedule at another time.
Yeah. Yeah, the last thing I would say is if we, if we go through, and we can take a position as we're like to run a test, because we have done a lot of preventative maintenance on our side, so we need to run this test in order to understand whether there are additional, you know, restrictions, or, you know, potential failure that might be outside of our immediate jurisdiction, or outside of what we have done. So we want to verify all the pipe cleaning work that we've done for the flows, so that's the way I would kind of position it.
Well, we know that the culvert under I-75 was cleaned. We know the flowway on the backside of I-75 was cleaned and widened. So the only other restriction could be, would be, and the four pipes that go into PON 132 were cleaned. So there are really any restrictions, other than if there's vegetation on the east side. If there's no vegetation there, then it's purely a volume issue, and it's a backwater curve, because your, your tree line is so much bigger than the other, just can't handle the water.
If you go to wear number one, where we discharged into Six Mile Cypress Lagoon, a lot of the times, the downstream side is above the control elevations.
Or equal to.
It's equal, yes. You know, that's your, your tailwater conditions aren't favorable to drain a lot of water.
And so, Steven, no questions on the monthly report from the board? Are you talking specifically about the bond certification letter as part of? Okay.
He submitted those, and we're handling those as needed.
Okay, alright. So anything else for Steven? Good to see you. Thanks for being here. Chelsea, we will go to District Manager.
Do you want to run through these now, or until the end of the meeting?
If you just want to hit them.
I can touch on them.
You know, while we have time, as long as we're on schedule.
Okay. So the first one is the street lighting discussion. As one of the projects that the board had on their plate for this year was the streetlights and the wiring replacement. Before we can take next steps on that, we need a kind of policy direction from the board. If you want to continue to own them as a gateway asset, or if we'd like to look at what FPL has to offer when it comes to lighting solutions of roadways.
Wait, wait. Let FPL take them over?
Yes.
So they would do the maintenance and the electricity?
Yes.
Both?
Yes.
They do that in half our community, and we're getting raw into the stick. The amount they charge for maintenance, and when they have a maintenance, like a light goes out or something, hell freezes over before they get there. They don't care. They don't do any maintenance. They do minimal maintenance. So I would be totally opposed to giving, we keep the deal so that we can control the maintenance. And then obviously, we have to pay them for the power. But to turn it over to them, well, I'll tell you, running a risk, because they do not do any maintenance.
So on this one, ultimately, looking for policy decision, so that way we can take next steps and kind of get the ball rolling on this project. Because we had, Laura, I think, did we have a fire on one of the poles or something?
Yes, because of bad wiring. I asked Bill to actually save the part that they found, and it had something to do with the way that the wing nut was put on. It just came loose, and it eventually shorted out.
That we had conducted?
It was one, sorry, what?
Was that the one in front of the country club?
It was in Gateway Greens, yeah.
Was that a repair that, or?
No, that was original. That was something we had to go in and fix. Yeah, but that's what we keep running into.
Yeah, so Chelsea and I, we talked about this earlier, and, you know, we're trying to understand what's the cost benefit of us owning your FPNL. And we could probably argue on both sides. I think when you look at, to add your point, when a maintenance item comes up, you're in the queue, and you're depending on FPNL to facilitate that queue as they see fit, regardless of maybe how. But also, because I think we were talking about too, the ability for us to identify vendors. And we're at the, you know, kind of
Mercy.
At the mercy of those vendor availability and their costs too, so.
We have, we have limited repairs that we can handle with eight way staff. But the larger repairs do get contracted out to our electrical contractors. So, I mean, there are pros and cons for both. It's truly, it's a policy direction and decision. And either way, a photometric analysis has to be done if you choose to go through FPL or our own. But we can do a cost benefit analysis for both, or if you're adamant that you want to continue to maintain and own them, we can pursue that.
Have we done, have Bentley do, I know we did it on Griffin Drive, we converted all those to LED. Has there been any discussion of doing the same thing on both Gateway Greens, the two roads, and Gateway Boulevard?
As part of this project, the intent would, again, this is a policy direction, but as a cost savings mechanism, and from staff's perspective, yes, it would be considered, go to LED.
Have we, I'm right now working with FPL over there, and I hate it. I absolutely hate it. Have they given us a break on the billings of all of the lights that were on Griffin, to give us the reduced price for energy consumption using an LED light?
I can, I can look into that.
Because we've, we've done it over there, and I just had to give them a certification that we have all LEDs, and then copy of invoices and stuff. And they're just now, this is five years ago. They still haven't given us the credit.
Yes, sir.
I personally think that we ought to continue to own the streetlights. And let our staff maintain them as much as they can, or with the contractor when they can. If we find that that's a poor decision, we can always change, switch, and go over to FPL.
I agree.
Yeah. I mean, what I was thinking is, one, if we do an order operations, the first thing is, we need to, we need to land on a plan. What is our lighting plan for the district? Two, in part of that, there's gonna be some design considerations that we'll need to, I mean, we have a standard here in Gateway, we need to confirm that or change it. And then we need to understand operation and maintenance, both from a cost effort, and are there certain SLAs that we want to control? So how long does it take to change something? And the last thing, if we do decide that something that we want to continue to control, to your point, Bill, it's up to staff to make sure that they're in a way where they can meet those standards, whether it's, you know, if we need to go out and find a master electrician that can do 30% of that work, or any, you know, certain scope, and then ensure that we've got vendors that can do that, then I'm fine with that, and to your point, if it doesn't work, we can all change.
Well, there's another issue I'd like to have Tony chime in on. How do we sell something that is useful and beneficial to us, that we own? How do we give it away?
FPL has a conversion for multiple communities, for, that they have a program that other entities.
I don't mean that. I mean, we tried to give away a road, that was to no use and benefit us at all.
Well, we still.
Attorney General told us we couldn't do that.
FPL would just have, put the infrastructure in, but the district would still pay. The poles are a lease, so the district would still be paying for the bill.
So we would open the pole, but we're giving it to them for maintenance. Is that what you're saying?
No.
Because I don't, I didn't think we could.
With FPL, with FPL's program on the tariff, they have your ugly concrete poles, and then they have some pretty aesthetic poles. Of course, you go to aesthetic, you pay for the aesthetic. If FPL were, if we were to move towards FPL, they could either, through their contractor, they have a turnkey program that they've done with other entities, that they would come in, install their conduit, because they have specs for that. The pole that the district selects, they would come in, that, all of that would be based off of a photometric analysis, which our engineering firm would do. Tell them the exact locations and places to put these. We would, our monthly bill would go from paying just the electricity to, it's like a rental, the lease. We never own them, so you're gonna pay for them over, and that's one of the downfalls to that compared to owning. You know, they cost X amount, you're gonna pay and own them after a certain amount of time.
And what about, so any?
Those would be demoed?
They'd be demoed. Okay, I think that's, alright. So here, let's maybe, if you can, let's do a workshop for this.
Okay.
So we can get into some of the details, and if staff can, you know, kick the tires on some of this, maybe we can do a staff analysis. What can we do today? What could we do if we were to hire someone for that position, or if we go 100% outsource for a solution?
Hey Doug, Doug, this is Bob. Am I unmuted?
Yeah, you're good. We can hear you, Bob.
Okay. If, one of the things that I guess I would like to hear in the workshop, is because I heard initially, these poles are 20, 25 years old, and the wiring may or may not be going bad, so I don't know what the useful life is, but that certainly could factor into it. If we've milked them through the good years, and now we're gonna have nothing but problems, it might be good to get rid of it. On the other hand, depending on the cost.
Yeah, so it would be an inventory and audit of our existing, existing structure, and replacement of whether it goes, we replace it, or FPNL, yeah, okay.
So if the board gives consensus, we can do a workshop. I can invite FPL in to do dog and pony show for their side of it. We can do some legwork on our side of it, and give you guys the full details.
Okay. And then Flavi did join, so I just need a motion to allow Flavi to join through the web for special circumstances.
Finding exceptions.
Findings exception. Yes.
Watch on moving.
Yep. Do you have a second? I'll say.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Fee schedule?
So this next one is a topic for discussion. I'm, if, coming from a municipal background, I'm used to, as, in tandem with a budget, you adopt a fee schedule. One, the big emphasis as part of this fee schedule is, I really want to get away from calling out different programming.
And will you just define the scope of the fee, when you jump up fee schedules, what are we talking about?
So any, any fees that the district would charge to anybody. So for the field rental, if you chose to lease or rent out for party space at the pool, what I would like to do is to get away from the school district, or this youth program, or this senior program, and just have it strictly as a resident, non-resident. And that's it. So you're either a resident, or you're not. So if you want to rent the soccer complex, are you a resident, or are you not? And they have two separate fees for those. I don't want to, I want to get away from counting the per persons. We have no way of confirming that. We don't have staff on the fields after hours, counting the number of kids. We, you're putting a lot of trust in your applicants.
You're not referring to anything associated with the enterprise fund, though?
No.
Okay.
No.
Yeah.
This would all be general fund.
I'm sorry?
It's all general fund.
But as part of that, the, as part of this fee schedule, the exhibit of the enterprise that's already been adopted would be, so there's one place that the general public could go and look at all of our fees that we charge.
And if I'm understanding you correctly, the purpose of this is to streamline and standardize
Consistency.
Consistency, and it also allows us to, you know, mitigate any potential
Conflict.
Conflict, discrimination, or any, any of those types of claims. So I, I don't think there's an issue with that.
Problem, except we have this agreement with the Gateway.
Yes.
School.
That's, that one.
That's an exception.
That will stay that way, per our agreement.
So that would be grandfathered in.
Yes.
We would have, we would have one special classification.
Yes.
That would be the only exemption.
And just so I'm, we're clear, that runs through?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Yep.
Okay, yeah. So we still have that.
So as part of the budget hearings, you would also have a public hearing for this fee schedule adoption, where we would really get into the nitty gritty of the numbers.
Because we would be modifying the fee structure at that time?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be with the fiscal year. And to be clear, the soccer agreements that are forthcoming in the next month would not be impacted for this, for their upcoming season that they're asking for.
They will go by the fee schedule that we currently have.
And maybe a broader statement would be, any league, any league fees
Yes.
that we adopt would be for the next fiscal year.
Right, and we've let them know that as well.
Okay, that makes sense.
Alright.
Employee handbook.
So there's a couple minor changes to the employee handbook that are financial, that are, that would be financially impacting our budget. I sent out the 30 day follow-up to the board. As you know, some of the bigger things here are staffing and enhancing our benefit package. One of them being, you know, buyout of PTO, right now, you know, we have 22 staff. They're more valuable to me here than they are on vacation. So if buying out their PTO, and they get, I mean, we're gonna pay it out either way, so that's one of the things. The, the levels of PTO accrual, that was approved last.
Before you start, or after you started, it was that first.
To adjust for mine.
So this is just, this is just putting in writing what the board already approved to break. It used to be level one and level two managers all got the 10.77 hours, and you changed it to break the Chelsea's rural district manager out as level one. So you guys already approved the manager part of it, it's in writing now.
Yep. And then usage, and then one of the big things that would be new, if you want to scroll down. It's very difficult to compete with municipalities when it comes to staff. And so there's a couple additional holidays that we're trying to catch up with the market of what they offer. And then also, your longevity of your staff here, we'd like to try to increase those numbers and that retainage. And so incentivizing staff to stay here beyond, you know, five years, it's, it's a small, little added bonus to a benefit package. So this would be a loyalty recognition plan.
And so I think your effort here is to look at our current total rewards, both compensation and benefits, to make sure that we are equitable within the marketplace, and that we are, you know, let's just call it a desired place to work.
Correct.
Marketplace is moving so fast.
In alignment with today's market pressure and other things.
These edits are low hanging fruit, to be honest. So these are, they're very easy to implement, something, you know, that the employees would see an added benefit very quickly.
And the studies will tell you that it is cheaper to have internal efforts to retain than it is to remove.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think anyone that's been in business knows, you know.
So the only, the only comment I would have on it is the three additional days off per year, I would like to stagger them. One in 22, or 23, one in 24, one in 25, rather than three in one year. I wanted to, I think I can just make one comment regarding that. We actually lost a half, don't know if we didn't hear, this is a half day. We previously got a half day for Christmas Eve, so that's just a full day now versus a half a day. But we did not have New Year's Eve or President's Day. Those are completely new. But Christmas Eve is just adding the first half of the day. We used to get off at noon that day. Okay.
Our ramification, if we implemented this right now for next year relative to the budget.
We'll have to get back to you on that. We, you have 22 staff.
Well, the pay isn't any different. It's just that we won't have people here, that we aren't paying them any extra to take off.
And there should be consideration for critical staff, so if you, if you're
Anybody who has so.
You just get that extra four hours, you take it on a different day, you know. So, but I think, directionally, this is a, I think this is, this is what we should be looking at. But you'll come back with more formal.
Well, this, I was hoping.
You want us to get approval for these changes?
As long as the board is okay with it, yes. We did send it to our.
I sent it to Suzanne, our HR attorney, and she did, I asked her if she had any major heartburn with this, and she said no. Her only concern was just that everything was running through the district manager, but she said if you were comfortable with that, she was okay with it. It didn't cause her any major heartburn.
I'd make a motion to approve it.
Motion second. Any further discussion?
Any consider, any consideration to staggering the days? In other words, do the Christmas Eve complete this year, New Year's Eve next year, and President's the year after?
I, I, I don't see it as being a big deal, Bob, personally.
Okay, well, it's a 30% increase in paid dollars, is what it boils down to. We had eight, now we're at 11. That's a 30% increase with one false swoop. I would just like to stagger it.
Yeah, again, we're just trying to be competitive.
I understand, I understand.
But I don't think it.
I'll put a vote. There's only two new holidays on there. The only two that we were previously not paid at least partially for were President's Day and New Year's Eve. Those days we did not have off at all before, so there are only two new holidays on there. The other change is the addition of a full day for Christmas Eve. It was previously a half day. No, I understood that. I'm with you there.
Alright, so I will call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, I'm opposed.
Okay, so that was.
One additional comment that I'd like to make. So I have drafted a memo. Typically, performance bonuses or market adjustments would be done at the end of fiscal. I would like to, I will, will be giving staff those, hopefully by the end of the month. We have the money in there, considering the market right now, and the cost of living going up. I'd like to get that money in their pockets sooner than later.
What are you talking about, the end of June?
Yes.
It would be on our June 24th payroll.
What it equates to is 4% of their annual salary, and that, that will be a separate paycheck by the end of the month.
And that's already budgeted?
Yes.
So we have in the budget?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think we planned for 4%. Okay. Laura, is there?
I, I have two quick things. The July 3rd celebration that we had been talking about, due to some circumstances outside of our control, we are gonna be moving that to the Labor Day weekend, and we're gonna combine it with a grand reopening of the pool, because the pool will be resurfaced, we'll have all our new furniture and everything then, so we are gonna move that to Labor Day weekend. And then the other thing is that we did confirm Denny Grimes for overflow for the budget public hearing.
We're going to, unless there's something critical, I'll skip staff monthly reports, unless there's any specific questions for, for those areas. Okay. We will move to action items. So six, eight, Master Engineering Report.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I may, I may tell you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is Rhonda on the phone? Rhonda, are you on the phone?
Yes, I'm here.
Ah, okay. And Rhonda wants to introduce, the first of two presentations required to be into the various documents with regards to the overall capital improvement plan, and the validation, the assessments, and all that authorization. And so Rhonda, do you want to do the introduction, or you want me to, or how do you want to handle that?
If everybody can hear me, okay, I'd be happy to do the introduction.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So the items A to E under your action items are all related to the issuance of the bonds that the board has been talking about for several months now. The first item, Steve Agapi, your District Engineer, will introduce the Engineers Report, and walk you through the Capital Improvement Plan that the board is going to be asked to consider later in the agenda. And then Russ Flyer, your Assessment Consultant, will walk you through the Assessment Methodology Report for the determination of the benefits that is accruing to the properties that are being benefited from the improvement. And then Tony will walk you through resolutions, the next two resolutions, which will relate to the assessment. And then Tony will walk you through resolutions, the next two resolutions, which will relate to the assessment and the setting of a public hearing. And your bond counsel, which is Pedro Hernandez from Spire, Patton &amp; Boggs, will then present the last resolution related to the bond, the bonds and the issuance of the bonds. So with those introductions, then I'd like to turn this over to Stephen to walk you through the engineers' report.
Again, Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. Today I have the master engineers' report for the capital improvement plan. This isn't the first time you've seen it, it's a little bit different than the last time you saw it. Fred presented it the last time. Um, the major changes, uh, this round, uh, we've removed the master irrigation renovation, which was a line item for two point two million dollars. And we also removed the, uh, master plan for the, uh, Gateway Commons. That item is still in there, but the, the language is just more general about the possible improvements that can be done there. So we're not pigeonholed to the actual Haam Montez master plan. So that gives us some flexibility. Those are the major changes. Um, I'd be happy to, you know, go through this if you need to. Yeah, I mentioned that.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Question?
Yes.
Steve, everything looked good to me, except I didn't understand, uh, I guess it's the first time I've seen it where I saw a number. Uh, two point seven, two point eight, the storage facility construction, uh, three thousand square feet, how was that number derived?
Um, so that number was derived from a couple different estimates that Austin was able to get from contractors.
I'm not talking about price, I'm talking about size.
Oh, the size?
Yeah.
I think it was based on Kenny's, just, uh, well, for one, we only have, I think, about, it's about three thousand square feet that's available through the South Florida Department right now. That's left on this property without major modification to that permit.
So it's a site limitation?
It's a site limitation, and I think that's, Kenny kind of was ha, comfortable with that number as far as, uh, needing that amount of space. I haven't heard that he needed a whole lot more than that.
And then the other one was the five, the same, same question only on the admin building, five thousand square feet. I noticed, skipping ahead a little bit, on the park, we're talking about a community building. I'm just totally opposed to spending money on a community building.
Yeah.
I'm much.
Totally opposed to what?
S, a community building. That was a hot, hot issue before. I'd much rather.
Oh, yeah.
I'd much rather see us take and make, for example, a fifty by sixty square foot, or fifty by sixty linear foot, meeting room that could be used for a community type deal, which then would not leave you but two thousand square feet. I guess my question is, I'm working backwards, because there's some rules of thumb on office sizes and stuff. So if we're gonna have, what I'm guessing, uh, Chelsea, ten people gonna be in that admin building?
It'd be more.
It, it would be more.
It'll be more?
It would be more.
Well, then two.
Well, and that's, that's why we're approximating. And, you know, when it comes time to the actual design of an admin building, that's something, you know, we can bring to the board. What are, typically, when you design a building, you figure out the uses first, and then you build based off of those uses. So that number could fluctuate up or down.
Okay, well, that's what I was trying to get to, is I was just using ten, and if you're using a hundred and fifty, uh, square feet per person, that's fifteen hundred. So possibly with a three thousand, uh, square foot meeting room, fifteen hundred, you're still under five, and you've got some flexibility. But, uh, I just wondered how we came up with that number, because I, I would be more inclined to say, I'd rather put square footage in that building than I would in a building at the park.
Yeah.
Because it just has nothing but one thing written all over, operation and maintenance costs out the bonds.
Yeah, I think.
It's crazy.
The idea here was, because this is gonna be offsite at a different location, hasn't been chosen yet, it's just to give us, you know, latitude of going up or down, and it's, it's approximate, plus or minus.
Well, we're not bound by this, but when people read it.
Generally, they wanna know what.
Well, I, I think part of it is to, um, I mean, it's my position that we build on property that we currently own, so we can take money that we would've spent to, to buy land and reinvest that, where we can maximize the dollar. So let's just say hypothetically, if we use the common park area as a destination for a new administrative building, then it would give us some flexibility in multi-purpose, uh, let's say, a multi-purpose facility that, you know, could be leveraged. But that's kind of what I was thinking, it's more bang for your buck if we build on what we own as opposed to going out in person. So then, we've got a little bit of wiggle room with some of the costs.
Yeah, that's gonna come, that's gonna come down to site acquisition.
Yeah.
And whether you get, you get, uh, a, a good deal or not.
Right.
So the intent with this item is to get the board's approval of the final master engineers' report. That way we can continue with the next steps through having Russ here with the master assessment methodology report. But generally, project-wise, this is what we're looking for your approval for.
Do you want, do you want to do these individually, or we're gonna package them all?
Individually.
Individually.
Individually, then when we get to the resolution.
Your mic on?
The, uh, oops, it is on.
Okay, just make sure.
Uh, yeah, when we get to the resolutions, the, uh, we talked about the board approving adopting these plans.
So I have a motion from Supervisor Guy, and a second from Supervisor Tinkle. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any other?
Rhonda, are you fine with that?
Thank you.
Yes, that's fine. You're good. You're good.
And just for the record, I did see Mr. Gepert nod his head in agreement.
Okay.
And a thumbs up.
Yeah, and a thumbs up.
Great. Uh, for the record, Russ Wire, you're, uh, real estate econometrics assessment consultant. And I have to give the board, uh, commend the board for their foresight in developing the original assessment methodology as we did a little couple of years, because it was very applicable to this, the bonds that we are looking to issue, uh, long-term. Remember, these bonds are really for Gateway only, not Pelican Preserve, for Gateway only. So we want to make sure we differentiate that. Second of all, the bonds will be issued in tranches. You're seeing a huge amount now, that's so we can do bond validation. And that's where we go to the state, hey, this is what we're gonna issue, uh, a proposed issuance. And that's why we had everything and the kitchen sink in that amount, ultimately, whether we do it all or not. You know, we'll, we'll determine as we go through the process. Third of all, uh, I want to mention that, remember, the methodology is based on determining the special peculiar benefits that flow to the properties, and also a portion of the special benefits on a basis that is fair and reasonable. And, you know, I won't go really into the detail, as you've seen how we've done it before. We take, we work with the engineer when he did his engineers' report, we put it into our, what I call silos. We have the roadways, we have the water management, then we have the administration, and that's how we measure the benefit. Remember, we use trip generation for the roadways, we use, uh, flow off the properties, both pervious and pervious, the water management, and then administrative, uh, everybody gets an equivalent assessment unit per property on that. So that's basically how I got to the, to the, uh, the assessment, or actually, I did par debt on this. So that ultimately happened is the par debt will be a portion to each single family, and then, uh, each multifamily, and then each of the commercials have their own par debt. And then ultimately, they will have an assessment based on if we issue initially ten million of the seventy million, then we will run it through the same methodology, and then you know what your annual assessment will be at that point.
So this is approving the big picture?
Correct.
And as we will do individual series for each sections.
The, uh, the bottom line of, of the whole thing, if we go back to the, oh, where's my last page? There we go, back to page thirteen. Um, you want to pull that up for me if you would, please?
Okay, there you go.
Okay.
This one?
Uh, that's the next one after that. There we go, right there. Ultimately, and, and as I said, I did it through the three silos, and then they got their percentages of the, of the par debt. Uh, ultimately, when you add them all together, for instance, on the single family, the roadway was eight seventy-three, the water manager was eighty-one hundred dollars. I'm just using around numbers. Administration was about four thousand. And in total, the par debt lien per unit would be roughly thirteen thousand dollars. And that would be if you issued everything right now. Because we had to, we had to take that and mark it up, which, which Rhonda did, and gave us what the financing plan would be in total. And ultimately, then we will, then we'll advertise it, right, Tony, in terms of the assessments, in the paper, and we'll hold the hearing on the assessments. If we were to, do, shall I introduce the, the individual assessments? If we issued everything now, because we talked about that before. Think it's appropriate? The, the, with, if I had a single family, what the assessment would be if we issued everything now?
Yes.
Okay, if we issued everything now, at the rate that we have, the interest rate and all that, that's gonna make them all different as we go forward. It would, it was not to exceed annual assessment per unit, would be a thousand sixteen dollars for a single family unit. That's if we did everything now and issued it right now.
It's a one-time assessment.
Correct. Well, no, not a one-time.
One-time ser, one-time bond series, in other words, did a bond series for the entire, all the projects.
Correct. So if we did it now, we, and we issued the seventy-six million worth of bonds, that's what the assessment would be over the twenty-year period.
Not to exceed impact to residents of one thousand annually.
Correct, correct. And it, again, that's gonna be, that's where it will be at, and as we're going through and issuing the bonds, as we're going through, we need to keep that ceiling there.
Yeah, which, we know that's not gonna happen.
Well, but anyway, I just wanted you to know, that's what it was, the multifamily was six ninety-one, all course would be two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then I used the, we have one commercial parcel, that, the highest commercial parcel, I used that as the not to exceed, because they're all over the place. I have a hundred and eighty-some parcels, but that was sixty-three thousand for one commercial parcel. But again, they're all over the board based on their size and trip generation and all those good things. So with that, do I have any questions?
What? Uh, Mr. Yau?
Oh, Russ, have you stripped out all of the Pelican Preserve?
Yes.
Residents?
Yes. This is strictly.
Pure O O one. Pure O O one.
Correct. All of the, all of the parcels within the Gateway, not Pelican Preserve, but within Gateway, the ones that.
The old Gateway.
That's.
Whatever I call the old Gateway.
Yeah, the old Gateway.
The OG Gateway.
But that's e, exactly right, and that's who's benefiting from this, you know, master improvement plan. So that's why they're being assessed.
Thank you.
So, as part of this, we would need the approval of the method, of this.
You said the methodology.
Let me just, Bob in Flavia, um, just wanted to make sure you have an opportunity, any questions on this?
No, uh, I've, I've talked to Russ enough times, and he's made the changes and things that were appropriate to make, with the changes over at Pelican, so we're, I'm good with it.
Okay.
And I'm good with it too.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. You have a second?
A second?
Yep. Uh, any further discussion?
I do have one, one more comment to note, that every time we, we issue the bonds, we will have a new methodology. We get a report just like this, based on the par amount that we are issuing. So you'll see the benefit, same way. That's it.
Was there, was there vote? I know there's motions.
We didn't get that far.
Okay.
Uh, Russ was just adding one more final discussion. So I'll call the, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Rhonda, you know, anybody need anything else on that action item, or are we, you all fine?
Yeah, you're, you're good to go with your resolution.
Okay, the next item, I appreciate it, is consideration of the adoption of Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twelve. And if you could bear with me while I read the entire title, then I'll briefly go through segments of it.
I, I was gonna say, you go read the whole thing, I'm going home and get a pill.
No, it's fine.
Just the bolded part.
Uh, Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twelve, a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Gateway Services Community Development District, the District declaring special assessments indicating the location's nature and estimated cost of those improvements, which costs is to be defrayed in whole or in part by the special assessments, providing the portion of the estimated cost of the improvements to be defrayed in whole or in part by the special assessments, providing the manner in which such special assessments shall be made, providing when such special assessments shall be made. Double, center twice. Designating lands upon which the special assessments shall be levy, providing for an assessment plat, adopting a preliminary assessment role, providing for a public hearing to consider the advisability and propriety of said assessments and the related improvements, providing for notice of said public hearing, providing for publication of this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. And in this resolution, the first whereas, outlines that the board has determined to undertake the capital improvements outlined in the master engineers' report that, uh, for Gateway Services Community Development District, capital improvement plan prepared by Tetra Tech dated June, it says, six twenty-two. And that's, uh, what Stephen Agapi, uh, presented. The fourth whereas addresses, the board had determined the benefits will accrue to the property benefited by the program. The amount and the assessments will be made in proportion to the benefits received. Fourth, in the master assessment methodology report for Gateway Services Community Development District prepared by Real Estate Econometrics Inc. and dated June sixteenth, twenty-two, the assessment report, as Russ just provided. And section four gives the total estimated cost of the improvements, which matches that, which is in the engineers' report of fifty-eight million, six hundred and forty thousand. Section five, that the assessments were defrayed approximately seventy-four million, six hundred and twenty thousand dollars in bonded indebtedness. Uh, then it also talks about the district manager is, uh, directed to cause a resolution to be published twice a week for two weeks within Lee County, and provide mailed notices to the owners of property, subject to the proposed assessments as required by law. Uh, in section ten, it talks about the, uh, assessments be paid in not more than twenty yearly installments advertised over twenty years. And the resolution is in order with a one correction, I just noticed again in the title. We will correct that redundant statement that's in there, and ask the board to approve and adopt Resolution twenty-two-two dash twelve. Uh, Rhonda, any other comments?
No, that's good.
We need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty-two-two dash twelve.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
The Flavia vote?
I did.
Okay, five to zero. Thank you very much. Uh, the next resolution is consideration of the adoption of Resolution twenty-two-two dash thirteen, and the, uh, part of this discussion would be a need for the board to make a determination as to the location, uh, the venue for the, the public hearing. Uh, Resolution number twenty-two-two dash thirteen sets a public hearing, uh, to resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the Gateway Services Community Development District, setting a public hearing to be held on August fourth, twenty-two, at five PM. Uh, the location to be determined by the board. Uh, we had need to determine that for the purpose of hearing public comment on imposing special assessments on certain property within the district generally described as the Gateway Services Community Development District in accordance with chapters one seventy, one ninety, and one ninety-seven, floor statutes providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Tony, I think based on historical participation, I think we can do it here.
I do too.
Okay. So the, uh.
Tony, another one, and I.
So this will be held at the district offices at.
Do you want me to get Denny Grimes?
Can we make it earlier than five o'clock? We, we could.
I mean, if it wouldn't do, I mean, I'm down at four o'clock. Doesn't matter.
Hey, nobody's gonna show up anyway. But, but the only thing I was wondering, Tony, on not only the Resolution twelve, I, I should've said it, but the thirteen, this again is just for the Gateway component, correct?
That's, that's correct, should have from Pelican Preserve.
Should, should we not, so that we don't have a whole bunch of people getting all their bows in an uproar when they find out that they're coming to the meeting and they don't have anything to do with it? In other words, can we indicate somewhere in this excluding Pelican Preserve?
No, I.
Because we keep saying Gateway, and Gateway includes Pelican Preserve.
I understand, but when the notice goes in the paper, there'll be a map of the area that's.
Oh, okay.
And the mailed notices will only go to the individuals in Gateway, not to Pelican Preserve.
And what I would encourage is staff to work with P-PAC, um, you know, to communicate that on, on their side prior to this. So, we're gonna go Gateway, I don't think we worry about Denny Grimes to spill over. Uh, we've done it a couple times, and we've had maybe one, no one there. So I think we do Gateway, we do it at four o'clock. Um, and then I think we're good.
Okay, so we'll fill in the heading, and then section one, it'll be at the district offices at four PM.
Tony?
August fourth, twenty-two, yes.
You need to add the word services after.
I saw that.
Okay.
Yes, yep, thank you.
Alright, so we need a motion to approve.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, Rhonda, is, is Gil, are you there, or Pedro?
Yeah, hi, Tony, this is Pedro Hernandez, um, bond counselor with Spire, Patton &amp; Boggs. Uh, so, so I'll present Resolution twenty-two dash fourteen, uh, in the same ilk, uh, that, that, that Tony presented his resolution. I can read the caption and just briefly summarize, um, what, what this resolution, uh, accomplishes. So, uh, Resolution twenty-two twenty, twenty-two fourteen is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Gateway Services Community Development District, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed eighty million aggregate principal amount of Gateway Services Community Develop, Development District Special Assessment Bonds in one or more series to pay all or a portion of the design, acquisition, and construction of costs of certain district include improvements, including but not limited to surface water management and stormwater lake improvements, buildings, uh, and parks and recreational, uh, facilities improvements, roadway improvements, including but not limited to landscaping, entrance, uh, lighting. roadway improvements, including but not limited to landscaping, entrance, uh, lighting features, and all related soft and incidental costs. Those are generally referred to as a capital improvement plan pursuant to chapter one ninety Florida statutes as amended, appointing commuter, computer share trust company, National Association to serve as trustee, approving the execution and delivery of a master trust indenture and a supplemental trust indenture in substantial form attached here too, providing, providing that such bonds shall not constitute debt liability or obligation of Gateway Services Community Development District except as otherwise, otherwise provided herein. Lee County, Florida, the city of Fort Myers, Florida, or, or the state of Florida, or any other political subdivision thereof, but shall be payable solely from special assessments assessed and levied. Uh, effect and levied on the property within the district benefit by the capital improvement plan and subject to assessment, providing for judicial, judicial validation of such bonds and providing for other related matters. So generally what this resolution accomplishes is, you know, as, as has already been previously presented to the board, the, the, the engineers' report, uh, setting forth the capital improvement plan, the master assessment methodology report, which, uh, is a report, uh, allocating the, the benefits, uh, of the project to, to the various, um, uh, units within the, that the, the non Pelican Preserve areas of the district. Uh, this, this in section one of the resolution, it authorizes the issuance of bonds in a principal amount of not to exceed eighty, eighty million dollars for the purpose of financing the capital improvement plan. Um, the, the bonds will be issued in, in, in one or more series, so it will be issued in phases, given the scope of the project. It authorizes the funding of debt service reserve accounts for each series of bonds if required, funding of capitalized interest, and the payment of costs of issuance of the bonds. Um, in addition, uh, section two, uh, just provides for certain details of the bonds, that the bonds are not constituted debt liability of the district except as provided herein. Uh, the, the county, uh, the city, or the state of Florida, or any other political subdivision of the state, and basically will be payable solely from special assessments levied on the, the benefited property located in the district. And then it sets forth, uh, certain general terms relating to the bonds, mainly the not to exceed principal amount, uh, and that, that the bond shall be payable and not more than, uh, thirty annual installments of principal. Um, and the, section three, uh, it just authorizes certain designated attesting members, um, which is, uh, essentially, uh, the Assistant Secretary or, or, or other designated member of the board that, that can attest uh, this, our seal, um, on, on the indentures. Uh, section four authorizes the execution, delivery of the, of the master trust indenture and each supplemental indenture. So attached to this resolution are forms of the master trust indenture and a form of supplemental trust indenture. Those are the principal legal documents for the bonds. These are just forms of the documents, but, but they generally are, uh, substant-, you know, they're pretty much substantially finalized. As we do, uh, return to the board, uh, at a later date, when, when we're gonna issue the, the, um, first series of bonds, there, there may be additional terms and details relating to that particular series that will be more fleshed out in the, uh, form of supplemental indenture, so that, so the board will, will have, uh, an opportunity to review those and approve prior to, um, going to the market, um, for, for that first phase. Um, section, uh, five authorizes the sale of the bonds through public or private sale. Um, section six, uh, uh, authorizes the appointment, uh, or appoints, uh, computer share trust company, National Association to act as trustee under the indenture. Uh, section seven, um, authorizes, uh, the district to, um, proceed with the validation for the bonds, which is a requirement under, under Florida statutes that the bond of the district be validated prior to, to issuance. Uh, section eight is just generally a further actions and ratification of any prior actions, actions or subsequent acts. Um, section nine authorizes the issuance of bond anticipation, uh, notes, uh, which, which, um, at times can be issued uh, for, for temporary financing of any portion of the C I P. Um, section ten requires that for any bonds to be issued, there's gonna be, we're gonna have to come back to the board for a subsequent, uh, resolution, which is generally referred to as a delegation resolution prior to going to market. So that, that'll happen later on this year for this first series of bonds. And then section eleven provides for severability and section twelve is, uh, provides for an effective date.
Uh, we have a question.
Sure.
Should, shouldn't the caption identify administrative facilities and improvements costs? I didn't see anything there that covered any administrative, for example, the buildings and things like that.
It's a building generally.
We're.
Yeah.
Go back, can you go back to the caption?
Yeah, it's in the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, tenth line. That it talks about including but not limited to surface water management.
I saw building and parks, but I was tying that. I'd, I'd like it if it makes it clear, because in every, all the reports, the engineering report and the other report, we use the term administrative.
Well, but I think there are other buildings.
I, 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 if, if, if you look at, um, in, in sec-, in schedule, Schedule I, uh, it has a, a general description of, of the, because, you know, obviously the, the engineers' report is, is, is much more detailed. This covers the, 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 the project generally, but it sets forth to different categories, administrative, parks and recreation, waterway management, roadway, and landscape. And then it also says, as more particularly described in the master engineers' report, um, that, that was, that was presented to the board, uh, on today's day.
Yeah, the reason I brought it up is because the engineers' report, table two, one specifically identifies stuff as administrative projects. I just want, I don't want somebody nitpicking us sometime and saying, you can't build that building because it wasn't inclusive.
He would be the one to nitpick us and he wrote it.
I'm not talking about him, I'm talking about, well, twelve, twelve thousand residents nitpicking us.
It refers, it refers to the engineers.
Capital improvement plan.
The capital improvement plan, and that is what.
As long as he legally thinks we are safe, I will let him put his neck out on the limb with a dead.
And then, uh, Mr. Yau?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In a previous slide, uh, my organization got into some difficulties on a bond issue because we had not included acquiring real estate in the purpose clause of the bond issue. And as the years went by, uh, certain people wanted to acquire some real estate. And we had a deuce of a time getting that thing amended after the fact. Uh, even though the chairman has indicated to this afternoon that he doesn't want to acquire any real estate, it's always helpful to have the ability to do it legally without having to go through a lot of trouble.
Yes, I don't consider that, is, uh, how much acquisition of construction costs? So do we have that covered? Um, the, the acquisition of, of property? Real estate?
I, I don't, I don't believe that land acquisition is, is, is contemplated in the engineers' report. I mean, I think the engineer can speak to that.
What, what did you just add? Design acquisition, construction, and non-construction costs?
Construction and reconstruction.
Or construction and non-construction, which is inclusive of land acquisition and all those other things, permits, everything.
If we do that, then we need to go back and approve the engine report as amended. And I guess the question is, Steven still here?
He left.
Uh. Can, can I just, 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 uh, i- i- I mean, and, and the, the, the engineers' report, uh, you know, in, in a sup- let's say, you know, the question is, is, I think would need to be amended, is that, I think is what you're saying, uh, Tony, maybe that we would need to amend the engineers' report to, to provide for, for land ac- acquisition. Um, and, and the question is, can, can, I don't, can we come back at a later date and amend the master engineers' report, which is, this, this resolution does contemplate that the engineers' report that may be supplemented or amended, uh, in the future. Um, where, where the, the engineers' report, we can come back at a later date and amend to provide for land acquisition if that is actually gonna be needed or required.
Um, this question, would you, because I, I think the, the question at hand is, if, if someone in the pu-, in the future, if land acquisition was a part of the, the execution of the capital improvement related to buildings administration, is that, is that, uh, would that be an issue for us?
I, I.
Or is it implied?
I think it would.
What I, what I would suggest, can we get Steven on the phone? Uh, because what I, what I'm thinking is, for example, if you look at the engineers' report, when it talks about the main uh, district building construction on page five, section two point eight, it says the new administration building will be located on a site within the district that has not yet been selected. So I think perhaps.
Let's say purchased.
No, 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 has been selected. And so I think possibly a sentence could be in there that the program, in, in without, if we're not gonna change the dollars. That's always the key also. Uh, and if you want to include acquisition in there, I would suggest that, that the, the acquisition of a site uh, may be necessary and part of the cost of the main district building construction.
Pedro, I think you're trying, I think you were alluding that this is the overall big picture umbrella and that as the series come forth, they'll have, each series will have a supplemental engineering report that would identify that as, that, that project in particular potentially as an acquisition. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, um, but, but I, I think to, 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 i- 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 if, if there's, you know, given the, if, 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 if the, the direct, if we can, uh, uh, update the engineers' report to provide that, uh, you know, that, that land acquisition may be necessary in order to, but, but we, we don't have any of those costs ascertained. So, you know, I, 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 I think that we could come back to the board and approve, uh, you know, land, land acquisition in a supplemental, in a supplemental engineers' report, because at that point, there would, there will be board action. Uh, and, and it will be approved, you wouldn't be, um, so you wouldn't be, you, you trying to amend the engineers' report after the issuance of the bonds, it would happen prior to. So, um, I, I, you know, I, I think we can go both ways. If we can get it added now, then certainly, let, let, there's no harm in, there's no harm in doing so. Um, and, and at least we cover it off, uh, you know, at today's meeting. And we can update the, 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 um, this schedule to provide for land acquisition, the engineers' report. And, and, uh, so we can certainly, certainly do it that way. And then, and then there'll be further, further detail relating to the land acquisition in that supplemental report. I mean, because right now we don't have anything identified, we don't have any costs. So there's no way, we would have, no matter what, we're still gonna need additional board approval for land acquisition.
The building, I think what we would say is, whatever we have allotted for the building improvement, land acquisition could be included in that amount. It would be inclusive, it may not have a separate number. So I think what we need to address is language. Your report, and can, Tony, can we go back? Uh, so we approved A, the engineer report, can we modify that?
We can go back, we have to also then approve, uh, as, and the resolutions are already adopted, two thousand twelve, twenty two dash twelve, that the, any revised engineers' report would also be added to that particular document. Russ, you had a comment too? Yeah. Because, because my concern is, if I'm before the court and the judge or somebody raises the question, is I want to be able to point to something in the documents, Russ, you have a comment?
Yeah, the only, the only thing I wanted to mention from the methodology, it won't change that at all, because it still falls under the administrative side. Just wanted you to know that that won't change.
So I'm just looking for direction on the best way to facilitate.
Well, I think what we need to have, I'm sorry?
I, I feel the same, I think we're covered, I mean, I.
I mean, Tony, you're legal.
Okay, if we can get Steven on the phone, had one sentence in two point eight, that just, uh, the new administration building located on a site within the district that has not yet been selected. The construction of saying may require the acquisition of real estate. And period.
Well, we don't need Steven on the phone to do that, so the board can take that direction and tell.
It's his, okay, it's his report. So I think we need to have him say that's, he accepted as, as modified.
They don't need that in the purpose clause of the bond issue?
No, we, no, in the, in the, in the initial resolution, we're adopting the master engineers' report.
I understand that, but this is the purpose clause of the bond issue, this is what controls.
What are you saying? We would, we would add it, we would, we would add the reference to land acquisition in the, in this resolution that's currently, uh, we would, we would.
Too many people talk.
Add the reference here.
Pedro, I'm sorry, you were saying?
No, I think that to address the question about the, uh, the resolution that's currently being considered, that, that we can add, uh, you know, reference to, uh, in, including land acquisition, um, under this administrative section.
So we go to, so can you, so what if you call Steven? Just run this by us, we can get.
To, Pedro, does the, the line item saying acquisition and construction cost of certain district improvements?
So acquisition is.
Land, building, just says acquisition. If we.
That, that, uh, generally speaking, land acquisition would be separately identified as, as the acquisition of land.
Yeah, it's not a construction.
So what we're saying is, we're gonna, we're going to, what to insert a statement in Resolution, or in the master engineering report? And then we're also going to insert, um, a statement in the, uh, the, the bond, uh, resolution, twenty twenty two fourteen.
Is it in the, in the caption?
In the, in the, uh, uh.
Yeah.
In the resolution state. So Pedro. Hey, Steven, so Tony, you want to?
I, I can't recall the exact language to be, I mean, we end up talking about the caption. So again, in section, Steven, are you, can you hear?
Yep, I can hear you, Tony.
Yeah, the discussion item that came up was that whether or not the engineers' report was clear that the program could also include the issuance of bonds and the funding of acquisition of any necessary property for the main district building construction. And so the discussion is to add in section two point eight and not change any of the costs or any of the opinion or probable costs. Um, that sentence, the added, we have the sentence that already says the new administration building will be located on a site within the district that has not yet been selected. Uh, the district may need to acquire land for the construction of the new administration building as part of this program. Is that comfortable, Pedro, are you comfortable with that?
Yep, that sounds perfect, we'll, uh, we can add that language.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
And.
And you could, may, maybe you can just say the cost of which shall be, you know, set forth in a supplemental report, if, if you wanted to just tie it out.
I like that.
I mean, I don't, I don't think we need it, but, um.
But.
Okay. Steven?
Yep.
Good.
Thank you, Steve. And then Pedro, you are going to insert something in the statement to also reflect.
Yes, so, so, Tony, would it be appropriate in the, just in the caption, is it, would it be in building and parks and recreation facilities improvements? Uh, would that be the, the appropriate area? Because I could just put, say, including but not limited to land acquisition there. And I think that also appears in a recital. And then I can add it to the schedule as well.
Yeah, it'd be, uh, after the board improvements, just, uh, before building, add land acquisition, comma, buildings, comma, and park and recreation.
Because land acquisitions should be able to stand alone.
That's what I mean, so it'd be, uh, it'd be.
Sort of.
Water management and stormwater lake improvements, semicolon, including land acquisition, comma, buildings, comma, and parks and recreation, because then that separates the park and recreation.
So that opens us up for, for land acquisition regardless.
Agreed.
Of the scope in this one, okay, so can we?
So, so, yes, so then we'll do, we'll do land acquisition, comma, building, and parks and recreation facilities improvement.
We can, we can have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty two dash fourteen with, um, with the identified modification of adding land ac- in the resolution state.
Yes.
And Pedro would make those changes.
I'll make that.
Have that motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye for favor, not opposed.
Okay, and, and Pedro and Rhonda, from a procedural perspective, uh, is it more appropriate to have the board uh, amend Resolution, excuse me, amend Exhibit A to Resolution two thousand twenty two dash twelve to, uh, have the Exhibit A, the master, uh, engineers' report be that as revised, the language that we discussed?
I think a motion to that effect to, uh, to formalize it would be appropriate.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay.
So, so the motion would be that to amend Resolution two thousand twenty two dash twelve to, uh, amend the Exhibit A Master Engineers Report for Gateway Services Community Development District Capital Improvement Plan prepared by Tetra Tech and dated June sixteen, two thousand twenty two to include the language with regards to including land acquisition.
In it two point eight.
In two point, in section two point eight.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, perfect.
Now, now, our butt's covered.
Yeah, so we're good. Uh, thank you all for joining today around those items. Uh, uh, if you joined specifically for that, have a good evening. Um, we were.
Thank you.
Yes, we're jumping to the remaining items, so the.
Thank you.
Purchase installation, so we've got a, we've got how many remaining balances to?
So the district purchase. So the district purchased ten ballasts. Uh, they're sitting in the shop. They have not been installed. Uh, to complete the project, we need to acquire ten more ballasts and do all of, and replace what is remaining.
That's within budget?
This would be outside of budget.
Okay, what's the cause of that?
Uh, the ballast.
I, I know this is in my book because I read it, but I can't find it. Can you help me? Which one it is?
Yep, V I F.
Laura, can you pull this up?
What? Pull it up?
Yeah, the B I F, it's the soccer ballast.
Yeah, I had it there.
Here. Oh, you already have it there.
That's not it.
Uh, here it is right here, if you want. Right here. So we need, so we need a remaining twenty-eight thousand.
Fifty-six thousand, two, two added, isn't it?
This was originally in the, it was in the approved budget, but got pulled off by the time you adopted the budget for twenty-two.
What we can do is we can reprioritize out of your guys', out of our, our seven million dollar loan, reprioritize some of those projects. We know we're not going to get on the street light wiring one this fiscal year. Um, so we could take this out of that line item from the seven million dollar loan.
So we're talking about fifty-six thousand plus or minus? Addition to those two.
Yes.
Funds available if we, if they're reallocated.
Yes.
We're just moving.
And then what's the risk if we don't do this?
It'll be delayed until next fiscal year. So you're going to pay, you can either pay twice to have the electrician go up or you can pay one time to have the electrician go up.
And the price probably could be a lot higher.
Donna, this is Phil, following up on an email I just sent you. Philip Rovner has revised.
Just, okay. Does anybody have any, any concerns with moving on this?
No, do it now than later.
Okay. Um, so do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, G, move it to the audit.
He's right here. Is that mute? There we go.
Where are we, Mr. Kim?
Uh, we're in, uh, G, we audit, we'll leave your twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
What are we waiting on?
Um, I, I'm trying to find the.
So this is our audit update?
Okay, um.
Are you, you have your phone on and your computer?
Say that again?
Do you, you have your phone on and your computer? Okay, you need to mute one.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jay Gaines. Um, and, uh, I'm, I'm the audit director with Burger Toons, Elon Gaines and Frank. And we perform the audit of Gateway Services, uh, Community Development District for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, uh, two thousand twenty-one. Um, the highlights of our, uh, audit report are that, uh, in our report of independent auditors, our basic financial statement opinion. Um, in our opinion, the basic financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund and the aggregate fund information of Gateway Services Community Development District as of September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one and the respective changes in financial position and the budgetary comparison for the general Pelican Preserve, Stony Brook Town Lakes and Lake Bank Restoration Funds for the year then ended in conformity with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. That's what we call an unmodified opinion at this point. And what that means is that all the numbers in the financial statements were stated materially correct. We also issued three additional opinions in relation to the audit. The first one is, it's, uh, the internal control and compliance letter. And we're pleased to report that there were no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. We also issued the management letter required by the auditor, auditor general. And we're pleased to report there were no management letter findings. And lastly, we did an attestation about compliance with section two eighteen, four fifteen Florida statutes. And the district complied with that statute this year, and that had to do with investments. Now we'll go into a highlights of your financial position and results of operation. Your governmental funds had a fun, fun balance at the end of the year of almost eight point seven million dollars. Your governmental activities net position was twenty-four point six million. Business type activities was twenty-eight point five. So your total net position was a little over fifty-three million dollars. During the year, your governmental funds had a positive change in fund balance of one point four million dollars. Your governmental activities had a negative change in net position of almost one point two million. And then your business type activities had a positive change in net position of almost one point six. So overall, your net position increased a little over four hundred thousand dollars. We also, um, are required to send the board a letter, um, it's called a SAS one fourteen letter. And it, um, we communicate management responsibilities. Um, we had no immaterial, uncorrected misstatements. And there was a deficit fund balance in the Lake Bank Restoration Special Revenue Fund. And that's the synopsis of the financial, um, audit. And if there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions?
Is this what, uh, we used to call unqualified approving opinion?
Sorry, I didn't catch that.
I didn't hear you.
My own?
You're good.
Yeah, you're good.
It, it's just, is this the same kind of opinion that we used to call an unqualified approving opinion?
I'm, I'm just having trouble hearing you. I apologize. I had a auto accident a little while ago and it's affected my hearing.
Is this what you would call an unqualified approving opinion?
Yes.
So we need a motion to approve this audit for year twenty twenty-one?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Do. Um, bathymet- bathymetric survey.
Just needs approval.
Uh, so I don't know if there's any discussion on this. We've been talking about this for a while. Um.
Can you do the bathymetric survey with the water levels as high as they are? Yeah.
Yes.
It would have been nice if it would be right at control elevation because then everything would be constantly plain. Now we gotta go out and do some measurements, but it's the, the firm that we went through, what, what, we're just investing in what? Phase one, which is about thirty-eight thousand. Is that what I recall it being?
Yes.
So do I have a motion to approve the bathymetric survey?
Yes. Second, so moved.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Great. Yep. I would assume Bob was an aye for yes.
Yeah.
Uh, so land acquisition. You want to talk about that? We'll talk about that for another twenty minutes.
So at the board's request, uh, we did have an appraisal done of the piece of property that we were considering purchasing. Uh, the appraisal came in under the original offered price. We had originally, um, had nine hundred thousand as the price. The appraisal came in at eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, I actually have the hot off the press offer here revised offer letter that reflects the eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar price. It is most likely going to not be approved by the people that own it because when I had spoken with their, um, broker last week before we had the appraisal done, he said that they were not willing to budge on the price. So it's pretty much a done deal. Uh, we're just going to sign it. We'll have it signed and send it and let them say, let them say no or yes.
An undone deal.
If, if the board would like us to send this offer to them at eight, at the eight twenty-five number, we'd be more than happy to. Or we can just walk away from the table and say thank you for your time.
I'd like to put the pressure on them, show the public that, you know, if we gave it a shot, we went, went by the book.
Okay. So you want, you're saying sign it, send it over at twenty?
When, when, when they're, when they're sitting down there, they're rolling the dice right now. Put, put, put it in.
I agree.
I totally agree too. With interest rates going up, things are going to get cheaper.
So, uh, in reviewing anticipating hurricane season, it looked like the emergency operations plan hadn't had, hadn't been reviewed in some years' time. I'll be frank with you. This is staff went through it, edited to get it up to date. It needs a complete overhaul, but if the board can approve this to get us through this, this hurricane season, uh, that's what we're looking for.
What's the shortcomings?
There, there is.
Or just so.
It's just, it's, it was getting it up to date. There was a lot of names and phone numbers and we wanted to make sure that we had an actual plan in our hands. God forbid something happened.
So, so we can live with the update that has been.
Yes.
Yes. Everything that we need is now in this plan and is updated.
You've managed on this plan for years. Just next, next fiscal year, we'd like to totally, I would personally like to totally overhaul it.
Yes. Second, Bill.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Uh, I will call the vote.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You. So six K, the capital project loan disbursement.
Um, we're, as I'm sure you're aware, we're continuing to move along, um, on the projects that were approved for fiscal twenty-two. So as a result of that, I need to ask for some more money from the loan. We've already, these are, it's not as big as last time Ed. So if you print it out, it wasn't like seventy pages. It was only about twenty. Uh, but this is a summary of what we've spent the dollars on for this. This is anything, this does not include anything previously dispersed. I'm keeping a very accurate spreadsheet of invoices and where it goes and everything to make sure we're not taking anything twice. So.
What vehicle is this?
Tundra.
The what?
The, the tac, the, the coma.
Oh, okay.
The taco. She calls it taco.
It's a taco. The, the keychain says taco. So we were able to, we were, I, I drove by, um, AutoNation and saw like six tacos in their parking lot. So I called and we got one.
Yep.
Uh, so motion to approve here. I make that motion.
Second.
All right.
The tinkle taco.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right. So we just need to approve resolution twenty-two fifteen, the public hearing.
I believe he.
Have we already did that one?
No, he, I believe he'll need to open the public hearing, um, as this was advertised. So just give it.
Okay.
I'll go trap him now.
In the meantime, any items to pull for consent agenda A through C?
I didn't have any.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then just for sake of argument, um, or awareness, so, uh, in seven, D through G, that's just for awareness only. There's no action to be taken there. Um, we've got the president's council meeting next week, Tuesday, the twenty-second. Can we add? So what is the agenda? Do we have?
It's in, it's in, well, it's been published, but I mean, it can be updated. It's pretty informal.
What do you want to add?
I want to add this bond validation. Let's just spend a few minutes talking about what the whole purpose is. It, it may be in there.
If you're going to do that.
Oh, we had budget.
If you do that, I think I would have a copy of the engineer's report available. Cause that, you get into that, other legalese, you're going to lose everybody.
Yeah. And I want to keep it high level. Like we're going to talk about budget and we're also in, in addition, we, we have developed a twenty-year plan. Yeah. Which correlates to this, to this bond. It is, you know.
Yep.
And then we can kind of go through and say, cause what will happen is there'll be a few people that'll freak out because we're approving eighty million dollars. Um, but we need to, you know, we just need to tee that up. So.
Validation.
Approved validation, right.
Not the issuing. So that's always the key.
So that's what I think. If we just.
Rust wire would have gotten it.
A few minutes going through it with the president's council. And do we also invite P PAC and any other of the advisory committees?
Public meeting. I don't know that we.
We can't, we don't specifically invite them. This is meant to be for presidents of H O As.
At our last, what I thought.
They can show up if they want. We'll come to them on ours.
I don't see anything wrong with having.
It's a public, it's a public meeting. We can't stop them. We, we don't specifically invite them.
Okay.
No, and, and again, on that point too, I think there was the same issue last time we did the twenty million dollar borrowing. We had to explain we're not going to borrow all twenty million at once or something.
Yeah. Okay. And then also, um, just keep in mind, we've got leadership board shop on July twenty-seventh. Uh, that's going to be at the club of gateway. Uh, I think we have the, the time set from like ten to one or something.
Ten, yeah.
Something like that. Ten to one. Yeah, okay. So Tony, we're going back to.
Yeah, I'm calling it stepping out.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, if, if the board has any items for that workshop, leadership workshop, please let me know sooner than later so we can prep and gear up for that.
What I basically told, I mean, what I told Chelsea is, is let her drive the agenda, items that she's, you know, what she's seen in the first thirty days. Either, does she need input from us? And then we'll also have some roundtable. We'll, we'll talk about priorities, work, you know, all that kind of stuff. But I told her, you and staff kind of run with, run with it. We'll be there.
I'm always open for input, but I mean, I have no problem doing that.
We'll talk about that. I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, add that as another.
So do we want to jump back to resolution?
Yeah. So running back to resolution.
I'll talk to you after.
Twenty twenty-two fifteen.
Thank you. Uh, yes, this is the amendments to the permit criteria manual, uh, from the last board discussion. Uh, the, the changes I made, I highlighted them in yellow and I tried to address the issues that the board talked about with regards to from the standpoint of a developer owner to get them to post a bond to try to, uh, have a source of pot of money in case they hit district surface of facilities from subsurface boring. Also added section in there with regards to the fee schedule include a fee for tampering with district utility facilities or unauthorized connections or use. And then, uh, just sort of clarified the definition of fee schedule and in a couple of places and capitalized it made that a defined term. I previously made the changes in red uh, with regards to, you know, all the debauches and the ground matters. And I also added language, uh, for the aerators. We had substantial language in there before with regards to the specs. I just added the half horsepower because separation requirements were already in there.
That was the one Bob wanted to add.
Correct. And, and I, I received an email from Mr. Geppert after the meeting. And then I went back and reread the manual and everything was in there except for the half horsepower. So I added that. So if these are all in, uh, acceptable to the board, the board adopted the resolution and I will re-paginate format this, make it pretty.
Okay. And to staff's point, uh, we did have utility staff review this and they were in agreement with all of the changes that are to be made.
So, so we are at the opinion that it is ready to go.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make the motion that we approve resolution number twenty-two dash fifteen.
Second.
Motion in a second. I'll call the vote.
Oh, thank.
All in favor?
Mr. Guy just wants to go home.
Uh, any opposed? Okay, great. Um, so we've gone through everything, supervisor comments. I will start with those. Bob, do you have anything from your chair remotely?
Uh, no, not really. Uh, COVID sucks, but other than that.
What'd you say?
COVID sucks.
Oh, is he, is that what he's got?
You, oh, I didn't realize.
Sorry about that, Bob.
Thank you.
Anything from you?
She's, she's on there, but I don't.
I have nothing, sir.
And?
Yeah, uh, Tony, Tony, update on, uh, Chuck, uh, Charles Mann and sign off on that, uh, Crossroad paperwork.
I mean authorization to submit the application.
Yeah.
Have you seen that yet from Lennar?
For what?
The authorization to follow the D O with Lee County.
Because Ry Linsky is just feels his hands are tied. Can't do nothing.
I thought, I thought, I thought that was going to be quickly obtained. Uh.
Was it, he, didn't he send something over, but it did not include the removal of the deed restriction? We were trying.
No, 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 no. This is solely for the authorization to submit the D O application of the county.
Correct.
For the.
Access road.
Access road.
Yeah, we've received that and the applications have been submitted to both Lee County and.
I hadn't heard, I hadn't, I hadn't heard that. Okay, great. That's all I get.
That's what I, that's what I paid for the other.
The only thing I have is, um, Laura, what were you talking about? Like the. Laura, did, what were you talking about? Like the, the comments property? Um, or Chelsea, I can remember one of you were saying in order for us to potentially build some.
Yeah, that's what we were just talking about. Um, we had some preliminary conversations and Tony can fill in all the, cause I'll probably mess up part of this, but there is a, there's a deed restriction on that property that it can only be used for recreational purposes. And, um, it, because of the whole bankruptcy thing from like a WCI and Lennar and all that. Uh, they were working on verifying that Lennar has the authority to remove the deed restriction from.
Yeah, just back me up if you recall, when we were looking at buying the Girl Scout building, there was a similar restriction there as to what that property could be utilized for. I, I know, I'm sorry about going in.
Bring up bad.
But, but there was, the, the one good result from that was that WCI executed a disclaimer and released that deed restriction. So, uh, when we had the conference call maybe two weeks ago.
Yep, they're looking at doing the same thing.
I pulled that up and I sent that to Charles and said, Charles, this language would work if you can make sure. And that, and that particular disclaimer release was prepared by WCI's bankruptcy council. So we all thought that that would be the appropriate document and appropriate entity. So I think that's what he's just double checking whether it's appropriate.
Making sure that it's still appropriate.
So it's inflating positive momentum.
Right. And they were fine. Um, they had some questions ahead of time and I assured them that it would only be an administrative building that the utility stuff would stay here. Cause I think they were concerned about the inventory and trucks and all that. And I'm like, no, no, that's, that'll stay here.
And one other aspect is we're preparing a zoning verification letter to the county as to that site because on the master plan, it's designated as a park district. So whether or not the ZVL will come back saying we can use it for other purposes.
You're talking about the FPL.
No, this is the common site.
The comments area.
It's designated as a park district on the master plan and have large, larger condos. Uh, and so whether or not we need to have an administrative resolution revising utilization of that or some other amendment to the zoning.
So that was part of that, the original DR that identified two hundred and thirty-six acres.
As modified, as amended with like thirteen or fourteen amendments, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So with that being said, I will call the meeting adjourned at four thirty-two. Would have been done earlier, but I don't want to talk about adding property and.